All right, ladies and gentlemen, thanks so much for coming out. This is a public meeting, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:11 PM on Thursday, June 19th. And on behalf of the city, thanks so much for coming out, everybody. I know that there's been a lot of... We've been trying to release news as we can to inform the public of what the plans are, what the possibility is. And you guys are a big part of that. That's why we've had this event here, so you guys can come out and let your voices be heard. So I do appreciate you coming out. I'll just go through the introductions here real quick. Most of you know these individuals here, but we've got Councilmember Adam Bradley, Councilmember Rich Steinkopf, Councilmember Donna Burnham, Councilmember Ryan Ireland, and Councilmember Tom Westmoreland is on his way. He's probably stuck in that Eagle Mountain traffic, so we'll excuse him for just a few minutes. And did you guys want to say any brief words? There's a little sway, yeah.
I guess I've been elected to say what. We just wanted to thank everyone for coming on behalf of the City Council. And just please let us know what you think, whether it's person-to-person, email, whatever works best for you. We want to know what you're thinking, what your questions are. So thanks for coming.
Thanks, Donna. And then introductions over here. We've got our Finance Director and Assistant City Administrator, Paul Jerome. We have Adam Bradley, he's our Energy Director. And we've got Dan. And Dan, I know your last name, but I'm going to come over and read it because I don't remember it at the moment. Dan Ellsworth, thank you, from SESD, South Utah Valley Electric Service District. And we've got Brad Marcus from Questar. Thanks, guys, for being here. Did you guys want to say any brief words? All right. So just to kind of give you guys the format here. There we go. So I'm going to speak briefly and go through this presentation. We're going to kind of fly through this pretty quickly. I'm going to keep it pretty high-level overview. And the big reason why is we're here for you guys today. We've anticipated some questions, certainly, and so we've kind of prepared at the end questions that we think may be asked, that we can go over in greater detail if no one does ask them. But the purpose of this event is really so that you guys can have your specific questions addressed, which is what we want you to do. To the extent that you're comfortable with that, we'd love to have you guys come up after the presentation. We'll allow Questar Gas and South Utah Valley Electric Service District to share a little bit of information with you at the end of this presentation. And they'll be here to answer any questions you may have as well. And then the end there, of course, questions and answers, we'll go through those. All right. So one of the big questions, why are we even looking at selling the utilities? This is obviously a pretty hefty deal. This is going to be a waypoint in Eagle Mountain's history. There are many reasons to sell. Operational efficiency is one of them. There's two different perspectives here. There's the city perspective, so the city as a whole, and how the utilities fit into that. Right now, the utilities are a significant portion of our time and efforts from all city staff, not just the Energy Department. And so one thing that that does is that kind of divides our attention in a way. Now, we've done it very effectively, and we're able to carry on doing that, but as we grow bigger, there will be consequences, if you want to say it that way. There will be additional resources that we'll have to dedicate to do that at the city level. If we look at just the utility level, the operational efficiency, by moving to companies that have been doing this for a very long time successfully, both Questar Gas and SESD, they don't have to divide their efforts. They're an electric company and a gas company. That's what they do. They're effective at it, and they don't have to divide their efforts where we would if we continue on. Access to future resources, this is probably one of the biggest drivers of this decision that's before us at this point. I want to show you guys, this is what our budgets look like for the gas and electric, respectively. Most of our budget, well over half for gas, is materials, supply, and the same for electric. You can see it's an even larger portion. That is, we're in essence, we're a distributor. We purchase the wholesale gas and the wholesale electricity, and we distribute it. We don't produce our own gas. We don't have gas production. We don't have electricity generation. So in essence, in simplistic terms, we're a middleman. As we move forward, this gets increasingly complicated, how we get that resource and what price we can get it at. It's complicated from a hedging perspective because we need to keep that supply cost level, as level as we possibly can, so that from one month to the next, you guys don't see spikes and dips in your bill. That's a very... It's complicated. We've done it relatively well, but as we move forward for many different reasons, which I'll let the experts talk about, that becomes more complicated. So I won't say much more than on that particular subject, but moving back to the other reasons to sell, debt reduction, this is a nice benefit. This isn't the primary driver necessarily of why we would do this, but all of these reasons definitely stack up together and present a compelling case as to why we would sell the utilities. Right now, as it stands, we've got roughly $48 million in debt with revenue bonds and some other debt instruments, but primarily revenue bonds, which is tied to our utilities, both gas, electric, water, and sewer. $26 million of that is from gas and electric. With the deal that we've worked out with the two entities, Questar Gas and SESD, $26 million of that debt would be eliminated January 1st, January 2nd. So that's a benefit. Future utility infrastructure needs. Now, our Utility Department has done a good job at building for future needs. We have above what we need right now to support the growth of our utilities. So as builders come in, we connect new houses and other units that consume these resources. They hook up to the system. We're covered for a little while. We'll be able to build into the future for a little ways. At some point, though, that runs out. That capacity runs out. Before you run out, we really have to be forward-looking and put more wires in the ground, more transformers, more lateral lines, more gas lines, and that comes at a significant cost. One of the things that we have concerns about is the projected growth in Eagle Mountain. Have any of you seen the recent articles in the newspaper about the projected growth? I think it was 434% by 2050, if I'm not mistaken. Anyway, the projected growth for Eagle Mountain alone puts us well over 50,000 residents not far out, less than 30 years. That's significant growth, which means we'll have to make additional investments there. If we sell, then that burden falls to Questar Gas and SESD, who are better prepared, I would argue, to do that and maintain the operations as well. New regulatory requirements, this is a big one. And you know, some of these gentlemen can speak a little more on this as we go through and answer questions, but the regulatory requirements, especially on the gas utility as we grow, requires what they call a FERC attorney. It gets quite a bit more complicated. And the regulations have every indication, because it's government at the state level and federal level, the regulations tend to increase and not decrease. Things get more difficult. And because of both the size that we will be reaching soon, we're expecting to have to deal with some regulations that we haven't dealt with in the past. That's additional time drain and resource drain. Wrong direction. So I gave you some of the reasons why we should sell, but let's face it, I don't want to say that there's no negative whatsoever. Now, some of these, it depends on the way you look at it. And I'll kind of give you both perspectives from my point of view only, but one of the considerations is loss of local control, right? There's a big argument that says municipal power or municipal gas doesn't really happen. We're one of the very few, and we definitely have the largest municipal gas system in the state. But municipal power, for instance, why would we give that up? We give that resource away, and we lose control of that. That's a valid argument. I'm not going to say anything other than that. It's a valid argument. It's something to be somewhat concerned about. The advantage that we have with SESD, though, is they're not a private entity. We still have representation on their board. It's still public power. And so there are many benefits to that. One of them, again, is that we would still have representation. Someone would be assigned to the board, and we would have a voice on that governing body. There are other benefits to public power as well, but certainly with gas, we would be giving up control there. There are regulatory bodies that watch over utilities, especially gas, and so someone is watching out. Questar has done a great job of maintaining good prices for their customers, but we would be giving up direct control over the gas. But then again, most gas utilities are not owned by the municipality itself. Most people go through the private entity. Not being used for community improvement, so this is kind of a... Depends on how you look at it. There's a bit of a misconception, I think, that we can just take the money that we have from the utilities and use that on whatever we want, on roads, on planting trees, on improving parks. That's really not the case with government accounting the way that it is. We're specifically not supposed to use those funds for anything other than administrative costs of running the utilities. So we do. We do currently take some money and move it to the general fund to cover our administrative costs, so they pay a portion of salaries for executive and finance staff and so forth. But it doesn't go any deeper than that. We've drastically reduced that transfer from years past. It's been going down steadily. I think that our finance staff has been working well to do that. So that's a bit of a misnomer there. However, I'd say that we won't be taking money from our community directly and putting it back into the gas and electric utilities for our community directly. So that one does get a bit complicated. Economic development incentives? About to give up on this thing. It's probably... It's a user, though. It's not the clicker. In any case, economic development incentives. So this is a philosophical point of view. We could potentially say, if a big business comes in, hey, we will give you this without you having to pay for it, and if you'll just come into our community. So there's a trade-off there. We may get increased property tax. We may get sales tax if we pay to put something in for somebody. There are many different mechanisms by which we can do that. Philosophically, the question is whether or not the current rate payers should pay for that future project. And I'll let you guys come to your own conclusions on that one. If we do it, it should be an equitable deal. In any case, we wouldn't have direct control over that necessarily. It makes it a little more difficult. We could also make the observation, though, that there's very little temptation, I believe, for developer necessarily to come in and petition the political body that ultimately controls that. Less influence, right? It's less muddying of the waters. Loss of current revenue. What we're talking about here is going back to that administrative transfer, right? We've got our utilities, and the money comes in. We transfer some of that, and we put it into the general fund to help with the administrative cost. With this change that's going to happen, there would be a gap there. It's not a big one, and maybe I'll let Paul talk about that briefly in a moment, but we've accounted for that gap. It's about... Paul, would you say 250,000?
Okay, I've got it. So current budget that actually starts July 1st, the current projected transfer from the electric and gas utilities combined is $242,000. So it's actually quite a bit lower. That's basically, we budget conservatively so that this is not something that, if the sale does go through, that takes us by surprise. So that actually would be higher if we were anticipating going a full 12 months. But budgeting conservatively, we are only going to be transferring $242,000 combined from those two utilities, rather than about $500,000 is what it would be for a full 12 months.
For those of us in the room who actually enjoy numbers, that probably made sense. For the rest of you who probably didn't do much for you, but in any case, if that didn't make perfect sense, the point is that there will be a small gap. It'll be tight, and we'll have to make some sacrifices as we move forward. The deal is, though, that we've accounted for that, and we've identified ways that we can work through those issues for long-term solutions. In any case, we will... I'm going to figure out which one is forward and which one's backward here in just a moment. All right. So what is involved? So Questar Gas will purchase the city's gas utility for 11.4 million. Now, keep in mind, this is the tentative deal. I've signed agreements with Questar Gas and with SESD. I'm not ultimately the governing body. These fine people right here ultimately get to make the decision. So as we move along, we continue to negotiate. I have no expectations that these numbers are going to change, but I don't want to lead anyone to believe that this is set in stone and that the governing body doesn't have a chance to have an input. So in any case, the agreement that we've signed is a good faith showing that we want to move forward on these core principles, and we want to participate in the negotiation together. We've signed those agreements. That's the gas utility. SESD, the electric utility, will purchase the city's electric utility. And just a small correction there, they will purchase the electric utility assets. They won't be purchasing the electric utility. They are a special service district, so we would annex into the district, and they would purchase the assets so that they can continue to work on them. We would then fall within their borders, and they would be servicing our city. The gas and electric bonds will be completely paid off. So all debt associated with the gas and electric utility will be wiped out. $26 million in debt here on, let's say, January 1st or December 31st. January 1st or 2nd, it's gone. And other obligations that we have for power resource paid off, and some additional considerations. All right. To continue on, one thing, really the first thing that we wanted to do, and I know we have some utility staff here in the room, thanks for coming, guys. We wanted to make sure that everybody at least had a place to land. Now, Questar Gas and SESD have been great in working with us and kind of assessing both what their needs are, where our staff is at, what capabilities we bring to bear through our employees that we have. They've all been provided a spot going to the new utilities or staying with the city in case of some of the utility billing staff. So no one's getting left out in the cold, so to speak. Everyone has an opportunity. Similar compensation and similar benefit packages there. The city will retain the recently constructed energy building. So we recently built an energy building for our guys out there, and value on that building, Adam, is at 2.6 million. That will be retained. And the city will retain approximately 6 million in utility fund cash balance. So that's money right now that is set in the gas utility cash fund, and we can talk more about that as to why it's 6 million, if you guys would like to discuss that a little later, but that'll be retained. I think I finally figured out the clicker. So Brad, I'm going to turn it over to you. Do you want the clicker?
No, I definitely insist on that.
Perfect. Perfect.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Brad Marcus with Questar Gas out of Salt Lake City. We have some individuals here as well from Questar, and we'll stay as long as you want this evening to answer any questions you may have, one-on-one. Let me just, first of all, thank the mayor, the City Council, and the staff. They've been very nice to work with. And what I mean by that is there hasn't been a situation of games where we're playing kind of a holdout game. It's been a, this is what we can do, and this is what we can do, and it's been a very open and, I believe, honest in the way it's been handled. And I want to express appreciation to the mayor, the council, and the staff for that openness. It's been wonderful. We have been talking for over a year now, and prior to that, I'd actually been here a couple of years before that with the city manager that you had previously, talking to them about that. If you didn't know, Eagle Mountain gets their gas off a Kern River tap at the south end of town, down by your utility building. That is your sole source of natural gas into the system. You have a tap down there that can handle about 6.5 million cubic feet a day. Again, numbers you probably don't care about, but that's the hot water and the heat in the winter. Your current peak is 6.24. So you're near the peak of what that's going to be able to handle, so it means that there will be a need to expand that tap off Kern River. And so it allowed us to talk. If you didn't know, actually up near the Maverick, I believe it's State Road 73, am I correct in that? Up near the Maverick, we actually cross over the top of each other up there. And so the ability to tie the systems together relatively easy with minimal cost, well, zero cost to the Eagle Mountain residents, but if you would, it makes sense if you would. The advantage of that to you is, if you didn't know, we had a situation last year with a community in southern Utah that we bought several years ago, where they had one source of gas, and through an operational error on the interstate pipeline company, they inadvertently shut off a valve, and that neighborhood or that community went without natural gas on Halloween. And we were able to get enough resources down there very quickly to bring them back on within a one-day period. And so there are some real advantages to the residents knowing there are some redundancies to that. So let me just kind of zip through some slides real quick, and then, like I say, we'll can answer any questions you may have. Questar Gas is unusual in the sense that there are actually three parts to Questar. There's a Wexpro arm, which is an exploration and production arm. That E&amp;P arm, they're strictly, their role is only to find and provide natural gas for the utility customers. They cannot sell that gas on the open market. That natural gas actually belongs to the customers of Questar Gas. It was something that was started over 30 years ago, and it really has been a benefit that's enabled us to keep our rates low. We also have an interstate pipeline company that moves that natural gas primarily out of Wyoming and Colorado and central Utah into the Wasatch Front. And so just to give you an idea, let's go ahead and go to the next one. We have just under 950,000 customers that we serve statewide. We serve just a smudge of Idaho. We serve Rock Springs and Evanston areas in Wyoming as well. Just under 28,000 miles of mains and services. On the Questar Pipeline side, which is regulated by FERC that he mentioned previously, they have just under 2,700 miles of interstate pipeline. And Wexpro's job, again, is to look for and provide that natural gas for all of our customers. Let's go ahead. This gives you an idea, just quickly, the idea of how the gas gets here. Honestly, before I started at Questar, I thought it was a little bit like the hose on my house. I just kind of flip the knob, and magically it shows up. It's a little bit more complicated than that. If you didn't know, natural gas doesn't have a smell. We add a smell to it. As Mer Captain, it's a wonderfully smell. I wouldn't use it as an air freshener, for sure, but that enables... It's a safety. Safety's an important thing to us. Excuse me. That natural gas actually comes via an interstate pipeline into businesses and residences. Let's go ahead. Gives you an idea. I wanted you to see how Questar's rates historically compare against others across the nation. You can see, we're usually one or two, and sometimes three, on the right-hand side. That's usually as high up as we get. And again, the advantages of Wexpro provides that E&amp;P costs are used only for our customers. And if you have more questions, we can talk about that. Some of the services that we provide that I wanted to share with you, if I might, is the idea that safety. Safety is the number-one issue for us. And so if you have an issue where you smell natural gas, any of our customers, we will actually come to your house, inside your house, and help you find where that natural gas leak is. And it's important to us, and I know currently if you have a smell inside your house presently, that's a service that you may need to have somebody help you find that leak. Our service techs are trained for the purpose of being able to ensure that safety is the number-one priority for our customers. We also have... Our customer care center is open from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and that customer care center provides all kinds of services, you know, for a turn-on and turn-off, any transfers, really an opportunity to interact with our employees to ensure that you have... We have an Ask-a-Tech hotline. And that Ask-a-Tech hotline, let's say that you have a new water heater, you're not sure how to light the pilot light, you can call, and our service techs will answer the phone and help you over the phone with really anything, anything related to natural gas, even the plumbing of natural gas in your home. We can help you with that. We have 24-hour service, 365 days a year. Our dispatch is manned year-round, and as well as up in our gas control centers manned year-round, as well as we have employees as well. So that's just a service we bring to the table to ensure that, again, that safety's an important factor for you. We maintain our system. We are in the process of ensuring that our high-pressure pipelines and our intermediate high-pressure lines are safe. And many of those lines are welded steel, and some of them have a few years on them. So we're going back through to make sure that every line in our system is indeed safe. For example, if you didn't know, Eagle Mountain has six miles of high-pressure pipeline. It runs really from the south end of the city up through the heart of the city, over Unity Pass, up near the edge of State Road 73. And so you have high pressure as well, and in that high pressure, there are some requirements by FERC that are above and beyond anything we do for the state regulators, which, again, we're regulated by the Public Service Commission, which means if there is a dispute that you have with us, it allows you to go to a third party and say, we don't think this is right, we can work through it. Quite honestly, we pride ourselves in not having to do that. We value our customers, and one of the things we do is every month we survey our customers. On a seven-point scale, we usually average about a 6.4 every month. And that's important to us because even though we are a regulated entity, it's important to us to make sure that you're happy with the service you're getting. And just a few more things, if I might, is we have what's called a ThermWise program. You've probably seen the ads. We offer some rebates for such things, and I can actually share those. Let's kind of jump ahead to the next slide, give you an idea, that we offer rebates for those, you know, for those improvements you make, really to save energy. And that's another service you receive, again, from Questar. More than anything, we're just here to say that we'd really like to provide service to the residents here. We've been a business for many, many years, since the 20s, and it's important to us to provide that service. Even though we serve almost a million customers, we're involved in the communities. We do things, meals on wills, we're engaged with the neighborhood. We have employees who are here this evening who, you know, actually live in your community... We have employees who are here this evening who, you know, actually live in your community as well. So, we're all about, and honestly, we'd like to serve you. So, thank you, and I guess we'll have some questions in a bit.
My name's Dan Ellsworth. I'm the general manager of SESD. And most of you are probably wondering what SESD is. Let me go back and give you a little bit of a history to bring you up to speed. SESD actually is a spinoff of the 1902 Reclamation Act of the Strawberry Valley Project, which built Strawberry Reservoir, the Strawberry Tunnel, and brought very precious water into the south end of Utah County in 1906 and thereon. With the project, it's a little bit like what Eagle Mountain is today. The central Utah project is bringing water into this valley. And the growth that's going to take place with that water into this valley is something that's been enjoyed on the south end of Utah County for 100 years. As the valley grew, as more people moved in there, we changed from farms to residential to five-acre lots to communities. Things had to change with the power as well. And the power was then given to strawberry water users in a contract with the reclamation in 1924. They did that as a private company. They delivered the power, they serviced the power lines. In 1986, the Strawberry Water Users Association found themselves in a place that they didn't qualify for CRSP power, which is Colorado River Power. So, the Strawberry Electric Service District was formed in 1986. What that did is that qualified them for, to get water from WAPA, Western Area Power Administration, out of Glen Canyon Dam, Hoover Dam, off the Colorado River. And that was very important. It was cheap power, that was a lot of power. As we've all experienced the growth of the West, things are changing. Resources are tightening up. Coal plants are being decommissioned. The nuclear movement shut down options for us years ago. They're starting to pick up speed. Those that protested it are now coming back and saying, "Maybe we didn't do the right thing." But those are still 20 years out to come up with some nuclear power. So, resource is a big deal. In 1986, Electric Service District was formed. It became a joint operation between a private organization, strawberry water users, and the Electric Service District, which was public. That operated that way until 2003. In 2003, the Electric Service District bought out all holdings and any contracts that the strawberry water users organization had, and we've been moving forward as a pure electric service district since 2003. SESD is the only real electric service district in the state of Utah, and it has some unique opportunities for it. Yes, there is a new currently-formed electric service district down in Tecuhabe, but they run on a generator to serve a few customers and little traders down there. With that said, I'd like to go back to what Brad said. Our interaction with Eagle Mountain has been nothing short of really incredible. The honesty and the openness that your mayor and the staff has been incredible. It's been a little bit moving that we can sit down and have an open conversation, lay it out on the table, and say, "This works, that works, that's not going to work." The process has been pretty incredible. So, thank you, Mayor and staff, for doing that. As we sit here, we're not a very big company. We run about 500 miles of overhead line. We run transmission lines that intertwine and feed in the cities of Springville, Spanish Fork, Salem, and Payson. We maintain all of our own substations, all for 3,500 customers. So, how could this be? How could we buy out somebody that is basically twice as large? As we were talking, and this kind of was spurred on by conversations with Adam and I, because we're both members of UAMPS. And the public power part of this, we think, is very important. And it was a unique opportunity, the fact that here, Eagle Mountain, could still retain a seat and have a say on their power operations. So, here we have an electric service district that could take over the debt, and yet still have a seat on the board. That's huge, if you stop and think about that. You would have a direct representative that would be on the board. So, as the opportunity came around, we have a board of seven directors. They're very wise individuals. They make prudent decisions. And I'm here to tell you that they vet out everything that they can before we have to increase rates or anything like that. And I think the last rate increase we had was back in 2009. But the question came up is, why would we want to do this? And what will this do to our current shareholders? And that was the number-one question, is what will this do to our current ratepayers? After a lot of discussion and a lot of insight into this, we finally realized that it's not going to do anything to our ratepayers. This thing could move forward. We could purchase. The debt's not really the concern, it's the resource. Where are we going forward? Currently, Eagle Mountain has a power purchase contract sometime into 2017. I don't know the exact date. With the decommissioning of coal, with the regulatory mandates that are coming down, it makes sense that we broaden our base, that we start joining together so we can come in and buy larger blocks of resource and make some moves looking into the future. Now is the time to do that. You don't wait until the contracts up. You need to start looking two, three years out to start buying this resource. The operational efficiencies were something that we wanted to look at. Yeah, they're small when you look at it, and we can debate it either way, but it made sense. With our transmission abilities, our substation abilities, with the underground abilities of the Eagle Mountain city staff, the overhead abilities of our current staff at SESD, it was a great marriage. It would make well-rounded linemen. One of the questions that has come to me is, can you handle the growth? Quite frankly, we know that we can handle the growth because we're going to be using a lot of the same guys, the same staff. All they'll do is change brands and carry on with installing all the services. So, we too see this as a real good opportunity. We see that we could work together and bring our forces, our crews, together and actually make a better power company to serve the citizens of Eagle Mountain and our current citizens and ratepayers down in south Utah County. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate that. I am going to resist the urge. There's a whole lot of information that I would love to share with you guys, but again, we want to make sure that this is your time, and we give you the opportunity to ask any specific questions you have. So, I'm gonna not talk for a minute. But I am going to call a couple of, we've got a couple of forms here. Sandy White, are you here?
Can you come back to me?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to. It's going to be short, though. There's only one other person. Okay. So, we've got Rod Erling. Now, there's two. Rod Erling, if you would step up. Thank you, sir.
My name is Rod Erling. I live in Lone Tree Development. I recently moved here from Pennsylvania. And in Pennsylvania, when a developer came in to an area to build his houses and his development, he paid for all of the infrastructure in that development, including all the road Are we doing that here?
That's a great question. Adam, I'm gonna have you field that one.
Yeah, currently, all the development, road, streets, sewer, storm drain, gas, electric, is paid by the developer in his development. The only portion of the system that isn't paid by the developer is, would be a backbone, a major development, like to feed that development, like upsizing through, and usually, they pay for it, and we reimburse them the difference of the different size of pipe. But yes, they are doing that. You're correct.
How far back does that go? All the way back to the initial point of supplying the particular utility?
They've always installed all their infrastructure. The debt that the city has accrued is for major improvements, like transmission lines, substations, some buildings, and different things like that.
So, should they pay for the new sewage system we have down here in Eagle Mountain?
I'm not aware of the sewer. I think Paul probably could answer that better. I'm sure the city funded that.
So, there are certain utilities within the city actually have what's called impact fees, which means that as new development comes in, they have to pay for the impact that they have on the system. So, with anything, especially like substations and things of that nature, up-sizing stuff that's actually already in place, isn't always able to be paid through, by those impact fees. So, that's where we have to continue to do rate analysis, impact fee rate analysis, to make sure that we're charging as much as we should for the impact that those customers pay. So, in the event of the sewage plant upgrade, some of that was able to be paid for through impact fees as well.
What leverage do we have to throttle overdevelopment? The main issue here in Eagle Mountain is going to be overdevelopment and water in the future. So, what tools do we have to throttle that?
So, with each utility and each resource we have, like water, specifically, there are analyses that are done through our city engineer and city public works directors to make sure that we actually have the allocations that we need to be able to grow. Many of you will probably have noticed the CWP pipeline that has been coming into the city. That was additional water resources that the city actually was able to secure for future development. So, it's continually analyzed to make sure that we don't overdevelop for the resources that we have. But in the case of electric and gas resources, we actually don't own our own resources. We have to buy that through a municipal power agency and on the open market, and it's transmitted into our city.
Yeah, I understand that. My worry is overdevelopment in Eagle Mountain.
Well, one thing with what we do on that, we do have a capital facilities plan, which is a five-year plan we can base our impact fees on. Then we have a 20-year plan, and we look at where developments come coming. Obviously, in Eagle Mountain, it is a crystal ball sometimes, but we continually analyze that to make sure we're collecting proper fees in our impact fees to offset those future costs.
What brings this up to me is that in Lone Tree, we have a single access road in and out of Lone Tree. We have a new development going in on the west side of Lone Tree, but I don't see anything happening to redevelopment of that road system, an access road to Route 73 or to Eagle Mountain Central. What I'm in fear of is that we have some kind of a major disaster here in Eagle Mountain, and nobody's going anywhere, and nobody's coming in to help us. That's the major concern I have, along with the development of utilities in Eagle Mountain. Personally, is my water pressure going to go to 20 pounds, 10 pounds, 15 pounds? Am I going to, for my family, am I going to be able to have heat at a reasonable cost? These gentlemen say I am. But like I said, I come from Pennsylvania, and we often got broadsided by utility companies out there. And to tell you the truth, I really don't trust them. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Rod. I want to speak to your point. Your point's well-taken about overdevelopment. And if your water pressure goes down below an acceptable water pressure, I think the state mandates that it stay at 40 PSI. If we don't take care of those things, we're not doing our job as well as we can be. Those things have to be addressed, and those are a concern. I think what Adam and Paul are speaking to, we do absolutely everything we can with engineering to plan for the impact that new development is going to have on the existing system, and make sure that we don't degrade the services that you're currently receiving. I wish it were an exact and perfect science. There are things that can impact systems in ways that we don't understand, and we do everything that we can to prevent that from happening. I think they've, our utilities have been relatively successful at preventing those types of issues. When they come up, we address them. But as development increases, I agree with you. That's something that we do have to take a very careful look at.
Pleasant Grove and Lehigh have a problem with their water already.
What's that?
We have family living in Pleasant Grove and also in Lehigh, and they are restricted on when they can water and other things because they overdeveloped. And that scares us because we have children living in both of those areas, and that is definitely a problem. And I don't know how they're going to handle it. But they should have done it because now people can't with water every day. And their pressure is not good, and apparently, the drinking water there is so bad that people are going out and buying the water in bottles and bringing it into their homes.
Sure.
So, I know for a first fact because of my family living there.
And I'm thankful that Eagle Mountain has a relatively new, relatively new utility infrastructures for all of our utilities. There are some places where there are issues that do need to be resolved. I'm not going to pretend like it's perfect everywhere and nobody has low water pressure. I know that there's an area right now in Kiowa Valley that has low water pressure, which we've been working with the residents to resolve. You know, again, by and large, especially compared to older, more established towns that have had, you know, old codes regarding what size pipe they had to have in versus the newer standards, you know, we're way ahead of the game there. That's a good thing. To speak very briefly, and then we'll go on to another question, is you mentioned one thing about raising the utility rates, and that is one of the primary concerns here, and I'll tell you why. When we went back to that slide, in fact, can you pull up the slide that showed the two pie charts? When we talk, I just like to keep you on your toes. When we talk about the resources there, this is, and I'm going to kind of go nerdy on you guys for just a moment, because I was a broker before this. Managing these resources through hedging your resource and making sure that you keep that supply cost level, the analysis that has to be done in order to do that is fairly complicated. Right now, we've done a good job at mitigating risk and keeping our supply costs relatively level, but it's been a pretty simple process for us. As we get bigger, that, out of necessity, has to get much more complicated. And that's compounded by the fact that as coal disappears, we move to gas, gas-fired power generation. That's what everyone's retrofitting their power generation plants with, is we go from coal to natural gas. That places a higher demand on the natural gas supply and production facilities. We don't have any control over any of those, so we go to the market, and we try to hedge as best we can. With Questar specifically, they have their own production. They know exactly what the cost of that production is, and they build that into their hedging. And when gas commodity, but these are commodities. Commodities fluctuate in price very quickly on a daily basis, and that has an impact on you as customers to Eagle Mountain. If we don't have the capabilities to mitigate that risk and to hedge appropriately, there's going to be an impact. And as everything goes over... And as everything goes over from coal to gas, the problem is you're, you're now tying, increasingly so, year over year it increases, we're now tying the prices of a gas commodity, not only to the gas, not only does it impact us there, it'll now impact us increasingly every year on our electric prices. That's a difficult equation to figure out, and as we get bigger faster, those are things that are a concern to us too. I, I'll tell you, I know big business, right? I, I hear it a lot, and I was a broker, so I, I know it very well. In all of my dealings, I have been thoroughly impressed with every conversation we've had with Brad. It's very different than, than interactions I've had with other large corporations. Brad and Dan have both been very forthcoming with me, and that, that means a lot to me personally, because I, I think leadership really sets the tone for everything. And so I'm glad to see that. That isn't the case with, with every, every big company out there. Take that with a grain of salt for what it's worth. That's, that's my perspective, but I hope that helps to answer your questions. Sandy, I talked way too long. Are you ready now, or would you? Okay, come on up.
Sorry, I wanted to do some last-minute research, make sure I didn't make you guys repeat anything. We mentioned the contract rates for the contracted electrical rates that are going through 2017. As a clarification, are those a fixed rate until that point? And does that mean that we will be paying different rates than the rest of SESD customers until then?
Adam, did you want to cover kind of the, well, can you restate your question? I want to make sure I understand it exactly before I...
Okay, so my question is, we, it was mentioned that we have a contracted rate for electrical through sometime in 2017. So is that a fixed rate, meaning that our utility bills will not change from December 31st to January 1st, assuming the sale goes through? And as a result, does that mean that Eagle Mountain residents will be paying different electrical rates than the rest of the SESD's customer base?
Great question. That crosses over a couple of things, supply versus usage, and I'm going to let Adam cover that, and if you, if Dan, you want to jump in, you're, you're welcome.
Currently, we have a contract with SESD, no, excuse me, with UMPA, and our contract is a fixed-price contract, except there is a clause in it, if they go to market, we go to market with them too, because everything is done through generation. If a generator breaks down, if it's a very hot summer and it's supply and demand, but it's been a very consistent contract that we've had over the last 10-plus years. And so, yes, until 2017, they, they are running into the same problem that everybody is running into, and it's decommission of coal and bringing on natural gas. We have went out, we purchased a block from 2017 to 2022 to add a real good price. It's a baseload price, which is the majority of your, your cost, but we're always stuck with the peak. And the, the thing with Eagle Mountain with this contract with UMPA, it's been a load-following contract, if that makes sense. They'll follow our load and don't charge us high load, low load, different prices. So I do not, on my end and talking probably with SESD, we wouldn't see a rate increase till 2017, but at that time, everybody right now in the power industry is looking at new generation. You have to figure out how to pay for it and, and before that comes on, so if, you have to figure out, put funds aside and start moving forward. But I, I don't see a change at all in the, in resource.
To answer your question also, I think we're, I think you're good on your rate until 2022. From there, it gets fuzzy, what's happening out there, but we are engaged of talking new resource and, and securing some from 2022 on. And with that said, we're looking at new resource. Where does this, where does this come in? When you, when you, when you talk resource, we're talking nuclear power, which is, which is possibility. When you're talking nuclear power, you're talking 2025. So, so exactly where does that come in? But we know, and let's face it, we're not getting new coal plants. And if we put new scrubbers and we do put everything else on these coal plants, those prices are going to go up somewhere in the nuclear range as well. So, so what can we do with the resources at our hand? We're looking forward. We're looking out there eight, 10 years to figure out what we got.
So mainly, my question is, I don't have it in front of me. Eagle Mountain's current per usage, per kilowatt-hour usage is, I don't know, it's 7.75 wattage, and then SESD's, it says on here, is 9.4 cents. Are we going to be going up to that 9.4, or are we staying at what we currently charge per wattage hour? Because there's a calculator that's on the Eagle Mountain news section that compares the side-by-side rates, but if we're keeping the same rates for two more years, then I'm not going to be seeing those savings in utilities until after 2017.
I'm going to, I'm going to jump in here briefly, because that, that calculator, if it's, if it's been misleading, or, I want to clarify, it's my fault. If it, if, if we communicated that this is what your rates will be, we hope so, but there's, there's certainly no guarantee of that.
Right, I understand that the rates change.
So let me explain a couple of things, because I heard a lot of things that made sense to them, and I happen to understand it. It's taken some effort, but I'm, I'm not sure if it made perfect sense to, to the layman. We've purchased this much of our power needs, but it, it goes up, right? I mean, when we come home and we turn on the air conditioner, it spikes up above that. We haven't purchased for that spike. We've purchased for right here. When that spike comes, we have to, we have to get that resource somewhere, and that typically happens on the market. That has a, a serious effect on, on the, the total price. There's lots of mechanisms that we use to, well, specifically, SESD does a good job of, of building something in to smooth that out, so we don't see, you know, continual rate hikes and drops and, but that part has to be accounted for. But I want you to keep in mind, that's with the customers we have today, right? So we purchase power for what we, what we foresee in the, in the very short term, but we don't purchase that power necessarily for all of the future resource. If we grow quickly, we'll have to purchase additional power, and that may be at a different rate. To answer your question directly regarding the rates, the way that we've structured the deal with SESD, our hope is, is that as we move forward, we should, at the, at the least, be able to keep our rates where they're at, and hopefully reduce them from where they're at. That's the intent. Now, I can't commit that to you, I wish I could.
Right, I understand there's fluctuations in the market and things like that may change. I guess my main question is, on January 15th, if I look on SESD's website and I see this is their current rate, is that my rate, or is that Springville's rate?
Their, their, well, Dan, I'll let you answer that.
You would pay the current rate that you're paying now.
Okay, so my rates will not change, assuming there's no other external factors that require change.
Yeah, and because of the power purchase contract that's currently in through 2017, which will then turn around, and after that, we can...
Okay. I have one last quick question. How does Eagle Mountain anticipate changes with the budget, budget billing program for this last quarter, assuming that the vote goes through? Because usually that's when they kind of renegotiate our, our payments. Are they going to not include the utilities and the, or the gas and the electric? Are they only going to budget bill for the water? Or what's kind of going to be that plan?
Currently, we're analyzing how we can, how we can do that. It's anticipated that we're probably going to have to, at the time that we would regenerate those bills for the new year, the new, next 12 months, we'd have to remove the, the people that are on budget billing from both the electric and gas budget billing, and we'd keep everybody on the water. So right now, we're talking to our software provider and, and trying to anticipate what we'd be up against in doing that, you know, maintaining at least one of the three measurable utilities that are able to be budget billed and keep those on there. But one of the reasons why we regenerate in September, October, is basically that's, that allows customers to get through the bulk of the summer, and it's, it's usually where they've got, they've come as close as possible to the previous last, previous 12 months that that rate was actually budgeted for.
Right.
And it's hoped that there won't be a lot of difference. Now, there always is the potential that there could be a credit that's owed to the customer if they used last, but there also is the potential that there would be some extra owing, and we would have to work with each customer to, to try to figure out how we can help them to be able to pay that extra at that time.
Okay, right. Thank you. I just want to thank everybody for the hard work. This is really exciting.
Thanks, Sandy. And I'll, I'll make a commitment to you also with the rates, is we get close, when we know what the rate will be, because there's a lot of variables that will determine that as we get closer, we'll communicate that to you. We're not going to hide it, sweep it under the rug if it, if it doesn't look better than where it's at right now. So I'll, I'll make that commitment to you right now. Jim Bright?
I just have a question. Last year, we joined the Uniform Fire Authority, and it was pretty much sold to us, as far as I could see, that the increases you could expect and assessments from joining the Fire Authority were going to be offset by reduction in utilities. I paid almost $300 increase last year because of that assessment to them. So my question is, what happened to the, the sale, as far as I understood it, that we were going to be saving all this money, and now we turn around and we're going to sell the utilities that were supposed to be the source of the savings? So I ask that of you, Mayor.
And it's a valid question. And Jim, I know I, we may have had that conversation a little bit. One, this is my, my opinion now. If that's the way that it was presented, it probably not, should not have been. And the reason why is this. UFA is a taxing entity, and they have no bearing, no control, no association or effect on the utilities. The utilities are a separate entity, and while I, I don't think it was, I don't think it was an intentional misrepresentation necessarily, I think it may have been an oversight, if that's the way that it was presented specifically. But I understand that, because to be honest, when you brought that up, I realized that I had done something very similar recently. We had, we had a $1 fee that we increased over here, and a $1 fee that we decreased over here between our solid waste and, and what was, solid waste and storm drain. So we increased our storm drain fee by $1 and decreased our solid waste. Now, I, I said and thought nothing of it at the time. I said, you know, it's a one-for-one swap, and that is true, but ultimately, what happens with storm drain doesn't necessarily have a direct effect on, on the other function. And if one has to be, increase the fee for, for your operation, then it has to increase the fee for operation, or the service level goes down. So I made the same mistake, again, it's $1 to $1, but I guess what I'm saying is I understand what the intention was. They said, we're giving value over here, we're taking value over here, or, or increasing the, the charge. So my, my answer to that is that you're right. It's, you, we would be losing, ultimately losing control over the ability to, to manage directly what the charge is to you. I would make this argument, and I, I do make this argument. When it comes to our utilities, and in fact, every function within the city, we treat them as their own separate function. We have to. I, I want to be honest with you, and if we need more tax money for roads, though I know it won't be popular, I'm going to tell you, look, here's the situation, we need to raise the tax rate, here's the reason why. We've done everything we can to prevent it, but here's where we're at. Because this is recorded, I'm not saying that we're raising tax rates for roads. I'm just making the argument. When it comes down to the utility function, we look at the utility function one-for-one. For gas, we look at the gas, do we need to increase the rate? Yes or no, to maintain the operations? I don't want the, the utility for gas to affect the utility for electric. I know that's probably not the answer you want to hear.
No, that wasn't the answer I wanted to hear. Just to follow up then, real quickly, I know you've got other things. When you say it must have been misrepresented to you, all of this that I've mentioned are in previous versions of the Eagle view that came from the mayor's office. So it's frustrating to me to, to hear that we're going to sell the utilities, and I'm, I'm also not sure what happens to this supposed $6 million that you were talking about, you could do wonderful things in the city versus maybe sending them back to the people who paid those fees. Any event, I, I appreciate your time, I support you, Mayor. I appreciate what you've been doing, but it's frustrating to me to have people sell something to you, really what I consider to be based on false information, and now we're going to be stuck with a Fire Authority who, if they need to raise fees, they're going to raise fees. And then we're going to be with a utility company that may have to raise fees, and on and on. So anyway, I appreciate what you did, but I'm frustrated. Anyway, thank you.
I understand. And Jim, I know you have to go. If you want to talk more about this, my, my office is open to you. If you want to call, we can talk more.
I was, I was just going to briefly mention, when, when we annexed into the UFA taxing district, one of the primary goals of the council at the time was to try to do all that we could to ensure that that would be revenue neutral from a city standpoint. So basically, what happened is we, we adjusted our finances so that it wasn't a net gain nor a net loss from a city budgeting standpoint, and, and so it was, it, it was all structured so that it'd be revenue neutral. Now, from a total overall service perspective, there's an, an increased level of service that we're getting, and so there was a, a slight increase in overall cost from a resident's perspective, generally speaking, but not, not very big, but a little bit of an overall increase in cost, but that, that came with an increased level of service. But from a budget standpoint, it would be revenue neutral. I think, Paul, we're pretty close to being, I think from, from your perspective, we could say we are revenue neutral on that transaction.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to, to point out was that basically, at the same time we're going through the UFA process to annex into the UFA, we're actually going through a rate study with Sawbelle and Associates. It's a third-party utility rate analysis company. Basically, at the same time, they basically told us that we needed to lower our gas rate, which we did. The gas rate went down by 15%, but they said we needed to raise our electric rate by 5%. So basically, at the time, we were going through the UFA process, we were looking at previous rates and how they, they were structured as far as a revenue standpoint. Once that process was completed with Sawbelle and Associates, they basically said, hey, long-term, this is what you're going to have to do for your rates in order to be able to service your customers. So in order to be able to say that it's, you know, revenue neutral, you've got a lot of moving components in there as far as that rate and analysis went, and the UFA increase for property taxes on an individual resident, that's, could be different for each customer based on their home value and usage between those two utilities.
And there's a lot of people with questions, so I'm going to do my best to be very succinct with my answers, and, and Lee Brown? Sorry, Lee, we're going to make you walk down here if you don't mind, sir. Just, it's that whole public meeting thing, we have to have it on the recording for the minutes, and appreciate you doing that.
My question is, is, I currently live out on Highway 73 out by White Hills. We're on Rocky Mountain Power. So is this going to affect us at all, or are you guys going to take over that infrastructure as well, or how does that all come into play?
Currently, we just went through, there was a Senate bill, I believe it was 180, 181, and, a House, Senate bill or House bill? Senate bill 180, and it was talking about annexation, and so when a municipal boundary annexes within, outside of city boundaries and picks up customers from another servicing district, territory with Rocky Mountain Power, in our agreement, it basically says within two years, we should have, if we can extend service out there... out there, it would be our responsibility as a municipal-owned utility to extend service." At this point, there is maybe some questions with the district and different boundaries. I don't know how that, if, we haven't addressed that right now because now you're going from a municipal-owned utility to a district. Now, it kind of gets into boundary issues, and they would have to be negotiated probably with Rocky Mountain Power and...
We've been almost two years.
Not since this. We passed this agreement last year. It just happened last year, the agreement that we finished with the city. So once the agreement was executed by the mayor, we have two years, and they'll come up and we'll renegotiate that service.
So are they going to extend service? Or, I mean, we're sitting out there kind of dead in water because nobody really, you guys can't come to any kind of a resolution with them yet.
Well, as far as running a line out there, it's very expensive just to run a line out and pick up those customers. Right now, we're through, I'd say, a franchise agreement for Rocky Mountain Power to continually serve that area until we can get service out there. Right now, if we had to go pick it up right now, we would have to go put infrastructure in the ground, which would cost more money. We do have an agreement with the developer also, that, you know, there are some responsibilities in his development agreement to pick up those costs. So that's a continually working process.
So I guess my question is, in a year, you're going to have this result?
I think it will be renegotiated.
That's not an answer to my question. In a year, you'll have this result.
Mr. Brown?
Yes?
I'll step in here briefly. I don't have the answer, and I can't give you the direct one that I know you're looking for. I'll tell you that it's an issue that is approaching. If it comes right down to it, and they tell, they give us the notice and they say, "It's yours, take it," ultimately, what we would end up doing is we would likely have to issue a bond and work an agreement with the developer who's agreed to take a portion of that cost. And we would, we'd have to put the line in. That's if we keep the utilities. If it goes to SESD, they would likely be in the similar position that we would be in, and that would happen.
And that would be my next question, is if you fulfill this transaction, then it would be SSED's responsibility, not Eagle Mountain City's. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yes. And if it makes you feel any better, we've had very frank and open conversations with SESD. They're aware of it, just as we are. So they know about the possibilities of what may happen with that.
Okay. The only other thing I'd say is I think this is a really good move.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Charlotte Dukos?
Not the same height that he is. Couple of questions for you. What does the debt reduction do to our bond rating? And other than getting out of debt, which obviously we all know is a better thing than being in debt, what is the benefit to the removal of that debt for the city?
Paul?
So we've been in contact with Fitch Ratings on our bond rating. And basically, in selling this utility and retiring this debt, basically, it'd be put into an escrow fund to be able to pay this off. It won't do anything to our bond rating at all.
So our bond rating stays exactly the same, and really, all it is, is we have less debt on our head?
Correct. So basically, each bond rating is tied to those specific bonds. And so our bond rating on our remaining bonds, which would be water and sewer bonds, would not be affected by that at all.
So there would be no refinance benefit, you know, no better rate for the remaining debt because we have decreased our debt load?
No. Basically, they're rated each individually. And because it's tied, each bond is tied to a different utility, they look at those utilities individually when they rate those bonds. And so just retiring the utility debt associated with electric and gas would not make the bond rating grow or be better in the water and sewer.
Does it change our ability to go to bond if we need to build new roads or anything like that?
No. Basically, roads are paid through what's called GO bonds. And those are actually general obligation bonds on the general fund of the city, which doesn't have anything to do with the utilities at all.
So we're basically just get the good feeling that we have less debt?
We just have less debt.
Which is good, too. And then also, I had a question about the administrative cost gap that you mentioned. If transfers were only allowed to pay for the administrative costs of the utilities, and we are selling the utilities and therefore no longer have those costs, why is there a cost gap? Shouldn't we be done paying those costs?
Good question. The realities, well, Paul, the, so with, can't tell if it's on or not. So basically, with these transfers, we've actually tried to make sure that we actually have reduced those over time, despite the fact that we still have, you know, staff that actually has to attend to those other duties and deal with those issues. So basically, with the $242,000, we won't have coming in from the electric fund, we would have to maintain or make up that money in order to maintain current staffing levels. So...
What are those staff doing? Shouldn't that only have been transferred for utility staff? And we don't have utility staff for those utilities anymore?
So basically, we'll still have utility staff that service the other utilities that we will keep.
Wouldn't those be funded by those utilities?
They will. And that's why with SESD and Questar taking over, basically, employees that service those utilities, there would be, those employees would, the staffing costs would no longer be on our books.
So are we anticipating that that will dwindle down to zero as that adjustment is made? Or do we consider that that will be a continued cost over the years?
So basically, there's two separate things. So utility billing staff that would still service the remaining utilities, water, sewer, storm drain, and solid waste, that cost would still be transferred to those. We wouldn't have to have as much staff in the utility billing area for the fact that we have less utilities. We still would have to have some. We're still open the same amount of hours, same amount of people will still move in and out. But the administrative transfer that's coming from the electric and gas utilities to the general fund is actually for other employees that are not, yeah, HR costs, finance costs, building costs that, as they attend to those duties, is just a small portion of what they do overall throughout their year.
So basically, we're working within the rules to fund some things that we just don't have funding for anymore. And now we're just going to have to get it from other places?
Yeah. So basically, that is allowed through state law for administrative overhead allocations. But we'd have to reevaluate each department's, I guess, basically, their duties, so...
Charlotte, I'm going to answer that a little differently because I, and I understand what you're saying. I disagree, though. And here's ultimately the thing. So we have a finance department, we have executive staff, and so on and so forth. They're there regardless. And if we had no utilities, utilities wouldn't be paying for any portion of that. We could make the argument absolutely that, hey, maybe we've got too much horsepower for the operations that we have. And I would probably agree with you on that. From the time, we've gone through some changes recently, which have reduced the total cost of our administrative staffing. We haven't backfilled. We've found ways to maintain those cost savings because of we knew the possibility of saving. Now, it doesn't make up for all of it. But the other question we ask along with that, so we've got this much cost here for administrative staff, and then we've got these four utilities, we'll call them, and they each pay a portion. Now that these two have left, should we double the expense to the other utilities? They're not really using us anymore. So that is the savings that we have to find in there.
So it was being spread over four, now it's being spread over two. And you're saying that we can't let anyone go in the utility department because they still have the same job to do?
Well, so, I mean, if we give a breakdown of who it's paying for, it's paying for a portion of EFO salary, city administrator, assistant city administrator, HR.
And it was divided four ways, and now it's divided two.
Right. Those functions don't go away. So the question is, who do we place the burden on? My answer is, we place the burden on the general fund, on the tax dollars that you pay, because it would be there anyway, whether or not we had the utilities, and it should be paying for it. We still charge the utilities that are in existence, but we don't charge them over and above what their appropriate usage is. So we're aware of it. We've made some improvements and saved costs ahead of this and accounted for the rest of it. But it's going to pinch a little. There's no way around it. Does that...
Yes. Yes. I just wanted to understand why there was a gap when we were selling and shouldn't have to pay anybody to do that anymore. So I think I understand it now. And then also, in the past, it's been explained that our utility costs here in Eagle Mountain have been, I believe the number was tossed around at one point, about 15% higher due to our debt service. When the initial numbers were run for this deal, we were given about a $50 cost savings per year per customer. And then a rate increase happened, which we know happens. And so now, my understanding is that it's basically neutral. We're going to be paying about the same amount. So benefit-wise, we're ending up paying about the same amount as even we did when we were having debt service. So what's the benefit if we're not, I mean, just to be clear, I've been in favor in the past of selling our utilities so that we are running a city and not our utility. You know, just in full clarity. However, just wondering what the benefit to the residents is, and we ran through some of those, if we're going to lose any cost benefit, and we still, and then we also lose control over rates as well?
Brad?
Yeah.
Would you load up those two slides we talked about? Because I recognize that we're the elephant in the room right now on this situation. Because if you look at the natural gas rates currently compared to your rates where they're at right now, we're the reason that you're concerned, and I get that. I will say, while he's loading that up, that historically, if you'd have been with us the whole time, you'd have saved quite a few more dollars with being a customer of Questar than had you been at Eagle Mountain. Now, I'm not saying anything bad about Eagle Mountain, just stating the facts, and we can find all that data. But what really is the difference is, is that as a regulated utility, whatever the commodity price does, we follow that trend, and that's what the pass-through is. In the news, you'll see what's called a pass-through. This is strange to believe, but it's true. We don't make money on the price of the natural gas. If we pay $3, you pay $3. If we pay $4, you pay $4. We make our revenues off moving it in the pipe, if you would. And so what's happened, if you would, is that the market, if you look at the market, this is what's called Henry Hub, which is, you know, kind of the trading price for natural gas that he talked about. So if you look at the market, say, for May of '12, it was just over $2 for natural gas on an open market. The actual close for today was $4.45. So what's happened is, to be flat honest, you're taking a snapshot at this very moment and saying, "Rates are higher with Questar than they are with Eagle Mountain." But the reality is, is that you're under-collecting currently as a city, and that at some point, you're going to have to adjust that rate. For example, last winter, you were probably paying in the $3 to $3.50 range for natural gas. This winter, the winter price range is around $4.70 of natural. And all that's happened is that we make, we follow that trend, and, which means, as it heads down the other way, we'll make that trend faster as well. And it will. It'll drop back down. We'll reduce rates. And so from a long-term perspective, I'm very comfortable saying that you'll be better off as a Questar gas customer because this can be absorbed by 950,000 customers plus all the expenses as opposed to 6,000 customers. So I hope that helps, if it makes any sense. I also took another, if you'll move to the next one. This is a snapshot of, at 11:00 AM this morning, it said, "If you're going to buy gas for the next 12 months going forward..." Remember, the last one was looking backwards. This is now looking forward. So if you're looking forward, for example, the price for July is $4.65. And even, as you might can see, in the wintertime, it's going to go up over what it would in the summertime. Part of that has to do, if you want to know the truth, east coast prices, east coast winter was severe. So nationwide, natural gas prices spiked up. There is concern of underground storage. Right now, it's very, very low across the nation. If we get a hot summer with low storage, it's going to take a while to inject gas underground. But it'll correct itself. And long-term, I'm very comfortable in saying that you'll save more money as a Questar, one of our customers, long-term. And I don't say that in any way bad about Eagle Mountain. Their staff is wonderful, and I think they've managed it very, very well.
Okay. And just one final question. What's the anticipated use for the energy building? I haven't been inside it, so I don't know what it was built to hold or do. Is it useful to the city as another office building or some sort?
Absolutely. The short answer is, we're out, we have outgrown, in essence, our current building. We've got, public safety is still out in trailers from 1985. I don't know when the trailers were put in, a long time ago. And they've been very patient. Where was their sheriff? I saw him in here a little bit ago. The intention would be to move them.
He's already designing his office?
He may be. Maybe that's what he wanted to do. They would move into that building. We would have room for expansion for many years for staff, and that would be part of City Hall. We haven't exactly assigned cubicles or anything like that, but that's ultimately what would be happening. And then additionally, there are some changes that would likely be made with, with the current utilities would not be using that building anymore. Public Works would. We would have another building that we could do a number of different things with.
Shuffle around for the use of the city?
Yeah. Well, or lease the building to somebody, or, there's many different options there.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you for your time. I'm excited to have this to explore.
Thank you. Ashley Lauer?
I'm sure you're all sick of me already. I've met with most of you, so... First off, when Charlotte just asked if rates are going to stay cost-neutral, and you nod your head yes. But we know that SESD will not have their current rates, which is used in that calculator that keeps our cost-neutral. They say that we might stay at our same rates, which means it will cost us more every year.
I apologize. I was simply affirming her question.
Okay.
I made no intention of answering the question by doing that, but go ahead.
Okay. And then same thing that she asked. So we will be staying at the .10459? Yes? Okay. And so now that we do know that, can you send out the letter clarifying we're not saving 50 or 1, that we will be paying on average 120 more per year per household?
Ashley, I made a commitment to you, and it still stands.
Okay.
And Dan, I haven't been part of the conversation that has set the rates indefinitely on into the future because we haven't signed a deal or done anything. And we do have other things that we still need to discuss. My intention from day one was to have a nice, long timeframe so that I can communicate, and City Council has the opportunity to communicate throughout.
Okay. I just, you already know my issue with it. When it was communicated like we're saving 50 a year or $1 a year, when nobody ever knew if that was the case.
Well, and we've had that conversation, Ashley. To be fair to me, did you go back and read the city website?
Yes. But I think most, I think most everybody was under the impression that we are saving $50 or $1 a year.
Sure.
I think that's probably why there's so few people here, is because residents think they're saving money. They don't need to show up.
And that's valid. And I did give you the commitment. I will absolutely communicate. As soon as we've tied something down and we know exactly what the rate is going to be, I'm not going to hide behind it. If the rate's more, I will shout it from the rooftops and let everybody know.
Okay. Well, sorry, one more thing. I know I'm being a nag, but... So what do you mean when we tie it down? If he just said it's .10459, and we know that theirs is 894 DEC therm, what do we need tied down if they've just told us what the rates are?
So you're talking about the per-kilowatt-hour usage rate, correct?
Yeah. And the DEC therm. I mean, if they're just said what the rates are, what are we waiting to tie down?
That's currently what their rates are. And perhaps I'm misunderstanding...
Well, I asked if we were staying at our .10459 rate, and he said we are.
Well, okay. I don't necessarily want to negotiate right here from the table. Well, let's do it. Why not? Dan, so in our conversations, Dan, now maybe I have misunderstood something at some point. We've been open and honest with each other up till now. We'll just keep it going.
Yeah, we'll keep it going.
Yeah, we'll keep it going.
The, what, what we've been discussing at this point is, at the worst, keeping our rates the same, or possibly reducing them.
That is correct.
So is there any possibility of reducing the rates from, from the, the number that Ashley just stated?
We believe there is a slim chance that those rates could be reduced in several ways. One is customer charge. You have a customer charge, if I'm not mistaken, it's like $10.31.
$78?
$10.74 or something. We had a rate study on our services about a year and a half ago, and ours is actually higher than that. But our board, as I told you, they're very prudent, they're very wise individuals, and, and our current customer charge is $5.78, and we're looking to raise it up to $9. So, so there could be a slight adjustment down in that. We're very, very close with our rates. And until we get our hands on all of the information, we've got to get into some critical information into Eagle Mountain that we just can't get our hands on yet, rightfully so. But as soon as we can get our hands on that, we do believe that there could be some slight reductions. But I hate to put it out there, and with our current power purchase contract through 2017, which I've said, that's why I say the rates have got to stay the same with that current contract.
Yeah, okay.
Because the last thing that we want to do is say, "Hey, yeah, your rates are going to go down," and then we have...
Yeah. No, I agree. That's my problem, is it's been kind of portrayed that way, is our rates are going down.
So we're really trying to be really prudent. SESD into this thing, we really didn't come in with this, that we're going to lower your rates and all. We, that's not the approach that we took at all on this. But we want to be fair. We want to make sure that we're charging the correct rate with what's going forward. And that's what we're trying to sort through at this point.
Okay, thank you. And then also, I think most council members have probably already heard me nagging too. Thank you, Donna, especially. You've emailed me back tons of times. But I am very concerned that, Paul's calmed me down a lot about property taxes going up, and that he can plan accordingly. He's pretty conservative in his budget. But fact remains, that we're more likely property taxes will go up now. If we don't have that inter-fund transfer, it's more likely. And with utility billing too, it's more likely the other rates might need to go up, where water and sewer are going to have to cover that share of utility billing instead of gas and electric, that $175,000 that they're currently paying.
I think it's a, a fair statement, but I disagree. And, you know, I, I think the, the issue is, we've addressed all of the possibilities here, and it's going to pinch, and I, I've shared that with you. It's not, it's not going to be without impact. We'll have to make some adjustments. There's lots of ways that we can do that, but in, as well, the tax revenues for sales tax, property tax, continue to go up as we build more houses. That's the reality.
Yeah.
Anyway, Paul, I'll let you jump in.
Mayor's correct when he talks about the sales tax revenue continue to increase. With the, the sales tax component for Eagle Mountain City is basically 50% based on population and 50% based on point of sale. We don't have a lot of commercial entities in the city. We're still considered a bedroom community. And so basically, all of our sales tax revenue is based on our population, or the overwhelming majority of it. They are, the sale, the legislative body for the state is looking at considering changing that to basically being 50% based on population, 25% based on property values, and 25% based on point of sale, which, right now, I can't tell you exactly what that would mean, but just at first glance, I would think that that would probably increase it. But our population continues to increase, and so every year, our sales tax amount has increased. And right now, I'd say in the last five years, the average has been around $100,000 a year, every single year out of those, those five. So that's, that's one of the things, is if we maintain staffing levels at their, their current level, and can still maintain services for the city, then we would not have, we, we would be able to make up for that $242,000 through increased tax revenue. From both the sales tax component increases with population, as well as the property tax that, although we, we haven't raised the property tax rate for years, as we grow as a community and add more rooftops, our dollar amount does go up without the rate going up. So we anticipate that those will continue to grow like they have, so.
Okay. I think that's about it. Oh, another thing that concerns me is we're already viewed as the city with high utilities, and so raising our utilities will not be good for the city image. And then the whole thing about we're getting out of debt. I mean, are you guys, SESD, using a bond to purchase? So I mean, it's not really, as citizens, I mean, sure, city administration, if you feel like you are the city, then you're getting out of debt, I guess. But as citizens, our utility company has debt either way. Whether it's SESD that owns the debt, or Eagle Mountain Power that owns the debt, as citizens, we're paying the debt, either way, no matter who owns it. And so those are my concerns, and I hope, I hope that everybody will research this, consider it, and I hope we can hold more meetings and get more residents here. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing, Ashley. And I, I know that we disagree on some points, but regardless of that, I do appreciate you voicing your opinion and participating, and thanks for doing that. Todd? You had some comments or, or questions?
I just, you know, Brad here, I'm supposed to talk to you guys, the paper says, but just following up on what, some of the things Brad said, you know, he said, all the great safety features that he's going to offer. We already do a lot of that, as far as, you know, he said that if there's an order of gas in your house, we, we tell you to call. Who do we tell you to call? No, we come in and we fix it, we, we stop the problem, we make it safe. And so that's just one thing. I don't know, somebody didn't tell him the right thing, or. And as far as the, the system's capacity, now, you, you're saying that the, the system's capacity is 6.5, and our peak is at 6.2. But is that the system's capacity, or the setup at the tap, the meter at the tap? Because from my understanding from Kern River, is that, it's just that they're, they won't be able to meter if we go over that amount. So it's more of a fact of a little minor upgrading at the tap, not like, oh, we're all screwed because we're 6.5 and we're going to be at 6.2. I just want to make that clear too, as far as, unless I'm wrong, and...
(inaudible)
Yeah. Well, they've always told me, and I'm probably going to get in trouble for even talking here, more than likely. But anyway, I'm a citizen here, and that's what concerns me the most. No matter what, it sounds like, you know, if we do this, I'm moving on, or something anyway, so. Mayor, also, well, go ahead.
No, what, what I really was saying is that work would need to be done on a meter station that you have for Kern River. That will take money. Those costs are spread over 600,000, 6,000 residents that you have, or homes here that you serve. My point was that that would not need to be done, because you could tie the system together with an existing system that's already in place.
No, no, and that'd be a great thing, and that's something we've always, you know, wanted, is redundancy from both ends.
And you'd have some redundancy that way.
Exactly.
And you don't have redundancy now.
It was just the way that it came out, it sounded like, oh, we're at 6.5, and, or, 6.5 is the max, 6.2, we're...
It means that work will have to be done. Work will have to be done.
Yeah.
Not cheap work.
No, not cheap work.
When you deal on interstate pipelines, it's not cheap.
It's not the end of the world though either, but anyway. Mayor, when I first met you, you said, you were, I think something to the effect of, you're not a politician, or you don't want to be a politician. Is that right?
Something to that effect, yes.
You should go for it, man. Because when she asks a simple question like, "Is SSD's rate going to stay, are their customers down there going to stay the same as us up here?" And it takes like 20 minutes to answer, "No," and three different people. It's a good political...
Well, thank you.
Sorry, don't get too mad at me though.
I'm, I'm not going to give myself too much credit, and it seems to be somewhat of a misunderstanding, but we can talk about it more anytime you can stop by my office, and we can have a further discussion with it, if you have questions. Thanks, Todd. Fred Peoples?
Way back a long time ago, this evening, did I hear that, this discussion that started like a year and a half ago?
That was me saying that I'd made visits to the previous city manager, inquiring if there was any interest in selling the utility.
Okay. So just over a year ago, it was presented to us, as the gentleman talked about us joining Unified Fire Authority. It was prevented, presented to the people that that increased property cost was going to be offset by reduction of utilities. And so now I hear that this was already under discussion.
No, I, I, Mayor, I apologize for jumping on that. I apologize if that came across. My point was that there was no serious discussions until really the end of '13 and the beginning of '14. There was no, it was, "Are you interested?" And it was, the previous city manager said, "Not at this time." So all of our discussions, I can only speak for Questar, occurred well after your UFA interaction.
Okay. Okay, thank you. But back to the utilities, we're giving away what control you had for the presentation you gave to the citizens. And I hope that, in the end, it, it works out very well. I am in favor of selling the utilities, but I think it was kind of presented a little not quite right.
I appreciate that, Fred. I'll just make one very brief comment. I kind of want to come back to the why. Why, why do we even bother selling the utilities? Because it's, it's very clear. Now, while I could say that the impacts will be minor financially to the rate payers, and that's what I believe will likely be true if we move forward, the, the question is, why even do it? If there's no immediate benefit to the, to the residents right now, why do it?
Well, I see the benefits, and I'm, I'm in agreement with the benefits.
Okay, fair enough. I appreciate your comments. Jim Shumway?
Thank you, Mayor, for this moment or two. I was mayor of a small community in southeastern Utah for about eight years, well, for eight years. And the community is Blanning, Utah. They own their own utilities, they, they own electricity, they own natural gas. We've had opportunities to sell. We have a neighbor called Monticello, who also had those opportunities. They sold, and they have regretted it ever since. I don't know whether things would be different this time or not, but they regret it, regretted it a great deal. When we bonded for all this, I believe that we've been paying back the bond. How much money have we paid back that we're now not going to really see? I mean, we've lost it. I don't have any idea of how much money we've actually put into the thing. I mean, they're going to be paying back the debt that we have now, but how about the, the debt that we had accrued? Are they buying this at a pretty good rate compared to what we paid?
You know, Adam brought up a good point, and Adam, you know, the utility infrastructure, by and large, now not all of it, but a large majority of it, has not been paid by the rate payers, but by the impact fees paid by developers. Now, it's still real money. Developers still paid for it, but the, the rate payers, the residents, are not the one who paid for the majority of that cost. I don't know if that gives you warm fuzzies about it anymore. It's, it's still a valid question, and I don't have the answer for you right now. I, I don't know if you do, Paul? If you have any indication?
Right now, the figures that I'm working off of, it appears to be about $7 million of the original bond notes that were signed, that's been paid off this far.
Okay, would that be included in the cost that they're going to pay for when they purchase this?
Right now, basically, the, the total of the appraised value of the two utilities is about $35 million. And so with the offers that we have on the table of about $26 million, the energy building value that we get to keep, and then the fund balance in the, between the gas and the electric fund, we'd be right at about $35 million.
Okay. Now, when we, when we brought natural gas in back in 1990, '94, it was a 12-year payback, we figured. Well, we figured 10 years payback, but it did take 12 years for the payback. And after that, there was a profit, and we did lower the cost a little bit. Now, my question is, when I look at all this, and I'm trying to simplify it in my own mind, if I were paying $20 in taxes before, and I was, and $10 in electrical, and $10 in sewer, that's a $40 total, and I got the services for that, now we're going to be getting the same services from the city, but we're going to be losing to, to natural gas and electricity, they, I don't know that they're going to want to take that little amount of money that, that has made us profit and turn it back to the city in a way. And, and I know that you talked about the way you can do that. By the way, I believe that you could look at grants, and, and a electric company or a gas company has the right to make grants to, to cities. And in so doing, they can make a grant for a, a building, or whatever it may be. And I look at it, I don't think that they're going to be doing that sort of thing. So what you have is, you still have $40 that needs to be collected, but we're only going to get $20 worth of service. And I wonder about that a little bit. I think that you mentioned, Dan, that you're, you were with UAMPS, good organization, and I think Kay Johnson was working there with our city. We were able to, we were able to purchase a part of a power plant and some different things like that. The city has the same possibility of doing that without becoming associated with, I mean, they're associated with UAMPS, but they can do those purchases and stuff on their own, and we still have the same sort of, we have the controls. The city having the control is tremendous. And if you, if you question the city having control, ask Monticello about what's happened to them, and ask Blanning what's happened to them, and the things that they're able to do with grants through those companies. Just a thought.
Thank you.
My wife probably has a dozen other questions, but I don't.
Okay. You bring up good points, and we, we are currently through, well, I won't wade into territory where I can't answer directly, but Adam, if I can ask you briefly, what he's referring to, same as perhaps horse bute, right? I mean, we, we have ultimately purchased resource through them, and that's a, that's an $8 million obligation on our books. So it doesn't show up on our balance sheet as a, as a debt, but it is. It's an obligation.
And SESD would assume that debt in the purchase. We are members of UAMPS. Eagle Mountain, I've been with Eagle Mountain since, out here since 1997, with the city since 1999. There's only been very few projects that the city has had opportunity on the power end to participate in. One was IPP3, but with, with what's going on with air quality, that got shut down. Payson project was right at the initial of Eagle Mountain City. We didn't really have the opportunity to get on that one. There was a big push for renewables. We did get on, on horse bute. Right now, we're in the resource project, looking for resources. With SESD, they bring a lot to the table with resources they're already participants in. With the members of UAMPS, Kay Johnson and everybody else, there's much opportunity for this, if this sale takes place, for us to go out there and really focus on bringing take back off IPP, picking up different resources. And we're doing that right now. Like I said, we just did a power purchase out to 2022. That's your biggest challenge in the, in the utilities. And I know we have three utilities sitting up here, and to say rates are going to stay the same forever, I'd be lying to you as a utility director. We've had historically low... We've had historically low gas. Electrical is, it's a new world for electrical that we don't even know the whole impact. So we are, that's one thing I have made it very clear to the mayor and to the council. If we, and I have said this every time the utilities have come up, we need to either stay in the business or get out of the business. And that is my number one job as an energy director, is to go out and find future resource to retain and maintain the rates the very best I can for the city. And that's the goal we would do with SESD also.
Thanks, Adam. And we don't have any more public comment. Is there anyone else wishing, oh, never mind. All right, Shannon, or Andrew Willis? Or both, maybe? Is the little guy in? No, I see a bow.
I was gonna ask, I haven't come up, but I had the question, so I'll ask it. I was wondering, maybe it was brought up before we came, we came a few minutes late, but has it been talked about in the future of other sources such as solar power and that sort of thing? If we had our own utilities and kept it that way, that's something we'd be in more control of. I was wondering what SESD has plans in the future. I realize it's a huge expense, but at the same time, it's a huge cost-saving and renewable.
In our current resource portfolio, we have hydro, we have wind out of Wyoming. We do allow net metering on our, for our customers. Now, we only allow net metering up to 5 KW because we believe that each homeowner ought to have an opportunity to reduce his carbon footprint, if you will, in the world of environment. We get pressure all the time that people want to take it up to 20 KW or something larger than that because they want to have all of their power come through solar. But we look at it a little different way. If we allow that, you're going to have to start driving your customer charges up because we've got to maintain the grid. You've got to maintain your distribution grid, you've got to maintain your transmission grid, or we can scrap all these things. So there's got to be moderation in this. So we've taken an approach, yes, we allow each one of our customers to put on 5 KW. Now, one thing that we do do is we make them buy a net meter, and that meter will record what comes in off of the grid, what they generate, and then an accumulative kilowatt-hours that they're consuming. I'm not sure that you guys have.
We do have a net meter.
Okay, so they have one, I haven't looked at it. So, yeah, we look at that. Now, as far as buying commercial solar, we're a little cautious of that because, you know, your renewables are only about 30% efficient at this point in time, and they may, I think they will get better over time, but man, you're paying 100% for a 30% product. So we blend some in, we want to be green-minded and do what's best for the environment, but on the other hand, we've got to keep our rates low and try to manage those.
Okay, but it's something that you have and you're looking into for the future?
We have in our portfolio, and we're very aggressive at looking at new and different types of things, yeah. To the point that maybe it's kind of like, wow, why are you going there? But we believe that we need to be on top of what's out there, what's happening, make a good decision, whether it's go with it or not.
Okay, great. And I wanted to point out one other thing based on some comments that were made before. We lived in Orem for a number of years and pinched our pennies a lot. My husband was in school, and I have gone number, my number through everything, and utilities, at least from my observation, a lot of it's just the water and sewer. That's when it's all clumped together, I think everyone looks at that number and says, "That's really high." But if you break it down, my observation, just for, I guess, people here, is that the gas and electric overall is not a lot higher. It's more the water and sewer, which naturally needs to be, from what I understand, being further out. Is that correct? Does anyone else have that observation on the board? That it's mostly water and sewer that makes our utilities higher?
Yeah, see, effective having aggregate of everything all on one bill, I think, can give a false perception that the utility bills are high. And I want to be very clear, I'm not approaching, none of us have approached this as, how do we solve the problem to make our utility bills lower? Because they're not out of line with what other people pay in other cities. That's not the problem that we're trying to solve for. And that's why I say, when we come back to the why, there's an aggregate of many different reasons. It's uncertainty with future resource, it's a rapidly changing industry for both gas and electric, and they're being increasingly tied together. It's our rapid growth and what that means for additional debt we'll have to take on. And is that the best role of our government, your elected officials and the administration that has to look over that and has to split their attention between running a utility and running a government? They're very different, and that fragments us. It's the aggregate of all of those things which has led us to this question. How do we look forward and secure the best possible benefit for our long-term future? That's why we're approaching it, and frankly, why we're having these conversations. Does that help?
Yes, it does. And actually, I talked to my father about this before, who's a controller and accountant and knows numbers very well. And just briefly, he said that exact thing. He said, "The whole city needs to be focused on running a city, and that's their business, and that's what tends to run best," he's noticed in his own business. So I appreciate you considering it. Thank you.
Thank you. John Rosovitz? John, I hope I pronounced your name correctly. You can correct me if I didn't know. Thank you.
I think I've got a few points of clarification. Number one, I don't live in Eagle Mountain. I live in West Mountain, that's north of Payson, and I am a SESD rate payer, and I'm very concerned about this meeting. And one of my concerns is, is that SDS has accumulated the $14.6 million debt, correct? Okay. And then that's going to, is that, that debt going to be amortized over just the current SDS rate payers or everyone, all the rate payers that are serviced by SESD?
Those would be calculated in the rates of Eagle Mountain.
Okay. So the debt that you guys maybe think that you're getting out of, it's off their books, but it's not off of you guys' wallet? Because that debt still remains the same per rate payer? Correct?
Say that again, John.
Okay, the debt will be spread along all the rate payers?
Of Eagle Mountain on the 14.6?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. And that, it's a valid point. I guess one of the things that we've considered, Paul and myself and city administration, again, it comes back to our ability to operate that system long-term. I mean, I'll tell you frankly, it does mean something to me that that's off of the books. It's one less thing that we have to worry about, keep track of, make debt payments on, and again, bifurcate our efforts, you know, some here, some there. It's a lot of work, all things considered. And when we turn that over to a company that's specifically performing that function and that function alone, there's a level of efficiency that comes with that anyway. So I appreciate your points, and it's well-taken. Sandra Wardle?
Hi, I just have a couple of questions. I completely agree with the previous mayor, Blanding. I'm not for selling it. But my question would be, why sell our only source of revenue? Yeah, we've got a few little stores, but that's a big source of revenue. If the economy falls, everyone's still going to need utilities, so we're all going to still have to pay, and we're, and that brings, yes, we have debt. We're not Springville, we're not Provo, we're not Lehigh, we're a brand-new city, so to speak. I've been out here almost 16 years, probably longer than the majority in this room, and we're going to acquire debt. That's what young, new cities do. We have to have debt to build, and I don't think there's any way around that. But why sell that only source of revenue? And I'm going to ask my second question and then sit down and let you answer, but this would be to the city council. The whole purpose of having a full-time mayor in years past was because we had to run our own utility business. So if we're going to sell that, I would urge the city council to reevaluate and go to part-time mayor. That way, we've got half of your salary and half of this gentleman over here who runs the, you deal with the utilities, well, we could take half of your salary and half of your salary, and maybe we could do some improvements on our city parks. I just know, because I've been here so long and I've lived here through so many mayors, that was the whole pull for a full-time mayor. We run our own utilities. So if we're not going to do that, let's reevaluate that, and let's get a part-time mayor, like most of the other cities that don't run their own utility business. Thanks.
Thanks, Sandra. And I'm going to, sorry, city council, I'm going to front-run you guys just a little bit because you brought up a wonderful point, and I'll tell you, this is something that I've already been discussing with the city administrator. The whole point to this, besides the benefits to the city with not having that huge additional responsibility of administrating utility companies, I will commit to you, my intention in the, at the end of four years, if I do run again, to do it at a part-time mayor. My hope is that there will be little need for a full-time mayor at that point.
Can I interject?
Absolutely.
Can there not be a motion made after sale to go part-time?
Absolutely. I'd support it. I'd support it if the city council decided they wanted to do that. It's a valid concern. You know, and just to clarify, I'll reiterate something that I said during the campaign. The salary for the full-time mayor is $70,000. I committed to doing this job for no more in paid wages over $50,000. Now, my wife doesn't have health insurance currently, and so my benefits come out of that $70,000. So once I get to the mark where there's only $50,000 left, anything over that is a donation back to the general fund. This isn't a money thing for me. This is an act of service to me. And I know that now I am a politician, and you guys will have to take what I say, take what I say with a grain of salt, but that's always been my intention, is to do good for the community. So anyway, I hope that helps, but I would support your suggestion. I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry, it's the procedures part, so just for the record, can you restate it, and then I'll just say it in the microphone for the recording? You're basically...
Do you want me to testify and interject? Do you want me to walk up there?
No, you're okay.
Okay. But if you do sell the utilities, will you please consider the motion to step down from full-time mayor to a part-time?
Sure. So the motion was, if we sell the utilities, would we support stepping down from a full-time mayor or codifying that to a part-time mayor? And to clarify, just to make sure there's no misunderstanding, that would be at the end of four years. As soon as this term is done, I wouldn't seek to be re-elected as a full-time mayor. I made a commitment for four years and stepped away from my career for this, and for me to do that, the financial impact, I wouldn't be able to bear right now. Anyway. Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Yeah, please. Thank you. All right. Linda Shumway?
Okay, I want to look at it as simplified as I can. We have two sides. On one, we, the utility payers, service our own debt, and will theoretically eventually pay it off. Now, I realize that in the process of this, there will have to be upgrades, you know, you might have to go after this, that, or the other, but theoretically, one day, that bond will be paid off, and we will retain control of our utilities. It is doable, it's been done, and it doesn't sound like a net staffing is going to give us any benefit to then sell it. So over here, we're still servicing the debt, and we, and effectively, it doesn't change what we pay, probably, you know, give or take. But we will never pay that one off. We will never own debt-free our own utility company. Now, you mentioned the fact that the profits can only be used for the utilities, but that's not the way Blanding did it, and that's not the way it worked out at all. Because through the grant-writing process, et cetera, et cetera, a lot of those profits can be funneled back into the community. So we are, as, we are one of the very, very few communities in this entire state that are in this position. My husband mentioned, and we watched Monticello be so, so sorry they sold, as they watched Blanding have these revenues, be able to do these things with it, help develop their family, their community, and eventually, I don't know if it's paid off now. It is? Okay. And eventually owned free and clear their own utility company. We were, Blanding was able to keep their tax rates lower and their benefits higher. Please take a really good look at that balance sheet. Say, do we want to give up those profits and still keep the same costs in employees? Do we want to do that? Do we want to throw away the possibility of ever paying that off and owning our own utilities and the control, free and clear? And if we do, there's really got to be a strong upside that so far I have not seen.
Thank you, Ms. Shumway. I'll say this. If we were not growing or experiencing rapid growth, I would agree with you 100%. If we were staying where we are or growing moderately, it would be a very different story. If we were at 50,000 people already, we had 50,000 people living in Eagle Mountain, and we were growing, you know, moderate to high rate of growth, we'd have to analyze that, but I might agree with you there. Unfortunately, that's not the reality that Eagle Mountain's looking at, and that raises its own challenges. So with that rapid growth comes additional debt. So the possibility of us paying it off, that is true if we stay static. If we don't, if we keep growing and we take on additional debt, it just extends the timeline. They would. Now, if we account for the other benefits, though, of purpose-driven, to take care of that as a private enterprise and as an electric district, they're very focused and their operations are very specific, whereas we are split down the middle. Now, I do want to call out something. Debt is not always a bad thing with a business. You have to capitalize your growth most of the time, unless you save up a lot of cash. You know, I think that most publicly traded companies out there have lots of debt, but we don't talk about it. We don't say, "How dare you, public company, have debt." That does happen with cities, generally speaking. If we go out and bond and take on additional debt, the public would be somewhat cautious about that at a minimum. But just to move back to the comments about taking money from the utilities... But just to move back to the comments about taking money from the utilities and offering benefits to the city. In the best of worlds, that happens and everything's clear and transparent, but I'm going to go philosophical on you here for just a minute because this is a problem in other places in this country and possibly in the state, too. So in Utah, we have truth in taxation. We say there's a process by which if this governing body, the people sitting at this table, excuse me, these people sitting at this table, if we want to go out and build just the coolest park west of the Mississippi and we want to come up with the money to do that, we don't generate our own revenue, we got to get it from somewhere and it's coming from you. So we have two different options here. One, in the way that it's intended, is we go through a long process. It's regulated by the state and it's clear and transparent. We have public hearings and you get to participate in that process and we notify you, hey, we're going to raise your tax rate and here's the reason why. In contrast, if we use the money from our utilities, it looks the same way, but we just go on about our business. We go up and we say, hey, we need to raise the utility rates. We raise them, we still reached into your pocket, but we didn't have to answer to anybody for it. And I'll tell you, the state auditor right now has a very close eye on this. I sat down and I talked with him because I wanted to know all the ins and outs of this before we moved forward. And the reality is, this is something that's being watched very closely. Now, I admit, Mr. Shumway, I'm not familiar with the grant that you're speaking of, and I don't know if that's a mechanism that's still possible. Paul, can you speak to that?
It may have been possible 30 years ago, but it isn't this time. It can still be transparent. A grant should be very transparent if you involve citizens.
And once it's paid off, it's not increasing, it could probably decrease.
I would have to actually sit down and talk to you about what the nature of that grant is. Every grant is different and so it depends on if it's a governmental grant versus a business-type activity such as this. So I'd have to actually sit down and talk to you about that. But like Mayor said, in the past, there have been many cities who have been able to not only have the administrative overhead allocation come into the general fund from the utilities, but transfer an arbitrary percent on top of that. Something that Eagle Mountain has never done, at least not that I know of in the past seven to eight years. I'd have to go back and look in, you know, in the past history to find out if it occurred before that, but I'm not aware it ever has. And so, just as Mayor said, the state auditor's office is basically coming forward with legislation or wants to come forward with legislation to restrict that ability for cities to do that. So that's why as Eagle Mountain has gone forward and with its financial process over the years, we've never wanted to transfer an arbitrary percent from utilities to the general fund because it's, basically, we've looked on it as not the best use of residents' money. The property tax and other tax revenues should go to pay for the general fund and operations of the city, and the utility revenue should go to pay for the utilities, so.
Me also, on the Monticello thing, we were the buyer of Monticello. I do not believe it was owned by the city. It was owned by some private individuals. We recently have reinvested millions of dollars into mains and services at the city, quite honestly, because the amount of leaking gas that was going on. The advantage to Monticello, those costs were spread out over 950,000 customers versus the number of customers there. And so, Monticello was unique. They're, they were owned by the same company that owned some properties in Wyoming that we bought as well, and we've had to do the same thing because of a lack of maintenance, if you would, in the facility. Millions of dollars have had to go in to keep it safe. And as I mentioned, when Monticello lost gas service because of the interstate pipeline, if they'd had three employees turning their gas back on, it would have been quite a while before they'd have gotten it back on. And so, it's, the city of Blanding and the city of Monticello are not really apples and apples, if you would.
I do apologize. I'm talking Empire Electric for just that electrical from Monticello. I wasn't even aware that they had now sold their gas.
Thank you. It wasn't theirs to sell. The city never owned a gas company there. It was owned by some private individuals who, quite honestly, never maintained it.
Excuse me, Kathy Bitter?
Good evening. Hopefully, mine will be shorter. It's more of a comment than a question. One question to start with, though, could we sell gas and electric separately? I'm under the impression we cannot because the bonds are mixed together. Is that correct? Okay. Correct there. Okay, so my comment, I appreciate this meeting. I appreciate the transparency that we are trying to have as we go through the sale. I think that is what is most important. I've heard a couple of comments tonight in regards with the UFA versus utilities things. The way I understood that was UFA happened and the utility rates lowered happened. They happened at the same time. They were not connected. UFA, you know, went with the fire department, which was not connected with utilities. I feel like there was failure in transparency when the UFA sale happened, and that's where the miscommunication is coming in. So if we can make sure we have the good communication, the good transparency, and the good understandings, we can avoid future miscommunications. I personally feel like the government should not be in the utility business. That's not why we have government. I am in favor of the sale. I don't know if it's going to cost me money. I don't know if it's going to save me money. I, you know, as long as it doesn't cost me triple, I don't really care. I don't think the government should be in the utility business. I don't think that's their place. I think the private sector can do it better. That's what they do. That's where their profits are in. That's what they've tried for. I think we should go that route. But with that, I did have one question for SESD. Will we ever have the same rate that is listed on your website? As was mentioned earlier, because of our debt that we are giving to you guys, that you're taking from us, I'm assuming that will create a different base rate for us. With the utility, the electricity we've already purchased, we will have a higher usage rate than current customers. When will we be on the same rate that is listed on your website?
There's been a lot of discussion about that, and that is very important to us. As I talked earlier about our customer charge, we're getting those in the same arena so we can blend those and make those the same. The rate, the big obstacle that we have is a power purchase contract that goes through 2017. As Adam mentioned, we are looking at other resource. We've actually secured resource on SESD's side to cover SESD's customers, and Adam has secured some on Eagle Mountain City's side to take us to 2022. That becomes a critical time, but with what we're seeing on those rates, we believe that right after that 2017, somewhere in there, that we should be pretty close to merging those rates.
Even with our current debt that Eagle Mountain residents will be paying, but nobody else will be?
That is correct.
Okay. How did we get cheaper if we're paying more debt than your other customers?
Well, you...
How are we the same if they're...
You blend the cost of service. SESD is not debt-free.
Okay, so we will be blending the debts we aren't?
Basically, but it's going to be on, it's going to be on your rate. Your rate is, as customers, you're going to pay it. There's one other thing I want to say here, and I want to be very clear here. SESD is going to also assume $8 million in debt. It's not even talked about on these papers as far as a resource with horse butte. So to clear up the debt is, we would pick up the 14-6, Questar was 11-4. SESD is entering into and going to assume another $8 million worth of debt, which is in resource, which is the young lady that asked us about the renewables. That was kind of a ouch. Nevertheless, we can see and we worked our way through this, that this thing could happen and work.
So just as I'm trying to figure out if this is going to cost me money, so I know how to set up my budget, eventually, we will be just a true SDS customer and nobody's going to know the difference based on address.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is, now, with that, that's going to take us a little bit of time.
At least 2017.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I say one thing? One thing, if this sale does go through, the first thing that me and Dan would do is go out and secure further resource, because it's out there right now, to maybe hopefully get our base rate, a good solid base rate till 2022. But time tells. The longer this takes or different issues, the rates go up. And so, that is our number one goal. That's my number one goal always, is finding the cheapest resource to deliver to the customer to keep the rates down. But now, if we blend our two loads together, you can find different resources and we can get a bigger chunk of it, look at our load growth. So it's exciting to move forward on that end.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Well, awesome. Guys, I'll say, this is the way that it's supposed to work. This is you guys addressing your government and letting us know. And, you know, one thing, I'll just say that I make myself available to any one of you. If you want to give me a call, call me. Call me on my cellphone, we can talk. I may not be able to take your call right away, but we can talk. And if you do have concerns, I'm willing to talk through them. And the same is true for the employees. I know I've offered that and you guys probably don't want to call the boss, but the offer is there. You guys don't even have to agree with me. I have one perspective, but that's why we're doing this, and I do appreciate your participation. We're going to continue to have more conversations as we move forward. We put it on a wide timeline for that reason. We want to make sure that we communicate with the residents, and city councils affirm that. I won't speak for them. You know, just in closing here, I know you guys have been very quiet, but did you want to share any perspectives individually as we close up?
Ultimately, the five of us are going to have to make a vote on this. We appreciate those who have come tonight, those who have asked questions, but please don't have this be the end, have this be the beginning. The five of us are going to have to make a decision, each of us. And so, email, phone calls, future meetings such as this. But at some point in time, there will be a public hearing at a city council meeting, and then the five of us are going to have a significant decision to make on behalf of our city. And so, the more input that we can have before that decision, the better. Appreciate all that came out today.
Just really quick, I am going to have to excuse myself, and so, please, email me, phone me. I have a flight that leaves at 6:00 a.m. and my husband's already really mad at me. So, because he's the one driving me at 4:00 a.m. to get there. So if, so I can't stay and talk, but please contact me. I'd be happy to meet with you one-on-one, phone calls, emails, whatever, and thank you for coming out.
Thanks, Donna.
In many ways, I wish this could have just gone to ballot, make it simpler in letting all the residents express their points of view through a ballot. So since we cannot do that, just as the other council members have stated, it's very important that you express to us your feelings and, you know, as we weigh out the costs, if you will, of two very different scenarios. If we stay in the power and gas business, then there is no just level ground there. We would need to be much more, much more aggressive than we have been in the past. Do we give up, you know, are there trade-offs there? Yeah, certainly there are. But as this, the brokering continues, as this deal comes closer to, in clarity, then we'll know exactly what kind of service, what kind of relationship that we can potentially enjoy with these companies. And I do hope to hear from all of you as those details do come out. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you all for being here, and I want you to know that I've learned a lot tonight from your questions and the answers they've been giving, and that's what this meeting is all about and the future meetings also. Thank you.
Again, thanks for coming. I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this, and this is currently a fact-finding mission. It's you and I, the five of us, learning what is best for Eagle Mountain today and Eagle Mountain 10, 40, 80 years in the future. So communication's important. It's important that you continue to share your feelings, good or bad. We're interested in every single one of your perspective, and that's the key, is that we are open-minded and willing to look at all sides of this, and this party's just begun.
Thank you, guys, and to our guests, Dan and Brad, I'll offer you guys any last words if you'd like to make any statements. Okay. I appreciate you guys coming out and participating. I'm sure you guys have early days tomorrow as well, but thanks for coming out and answering questions. Paul, Adam, do you guys have any last statements?
Sorry. I do want to say currently, you have a great city staff that works really hard, and it's a very hard thing for the energy department, the gas and electric utilities, to be in limbo and try to operate and understand where their future is. But I do want, from me, I appreciate my employees. They work hard and this is a tough decision because it is a life-altering decision, but they do a great job for you guys in and out. So if it sells, if it doesn't, you're in good hands with your utility that you currently have. So I just wanted to express that.
Thanks, Adam. Finn, I'll ask, do we need a motion to adjourn? No, okay. So we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 9:38. Again, thank you, guys, all for coming out, and I have business cards with phone numbers on them. If you guys have additional questions and want to address them, I'm happy to talk.